Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constand.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebatable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Before I begin the meeting tonight, I wanted to say today I attended a very sad funeral. At this time, I would like to reflect on the tragic loss of the Abus family of Northville, Michigan. On Sunday morning, the Abus family was returning home to Michigan after a vacation in Florida when their SUV was struck head-on by an intoxicated driver, resulting in a fiery crash in Lexington, Kentucky. At this time, I would like to take a moment of silence in honor of Sam Abus, his wife, Dr. Rima Abus, their children, Ali, who is 14, Isabel, who is 13, Giselle, who is age seven. All five members of the Abus family were laid to rest this afternoon. Our thoughts and prayers are with their family and loved ones as they cope with this indescribable tragedy. Let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. Next, we will move on. We have approval of the agenda minutes.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the Order of Business, January 8th, 2019, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. These are the minutes from the regular meeting of December 11th, 2018.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdallah.
I motion that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting of December 11th, 2018, as submitted in item 4A.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
There was a current claim that was supposed to be subject to correction on 635. It was about the charging of monies from one of the attorney fees for Faqee versus Wes Bloomfield. I never received any communication on that of how it was resolved or what it was.
That was 635 from the prior.
From the previous, from December 8th, December 11th.
From 6-1 through 636. It was claim 6-35. It was for $27 and change. I know it was very a small amount, but it was something that was supposed to be looked into. And if you look at our motion, it's subject for the clarification and correction of 635. And I received nothing. And there's no backup. So what do we do now?
Was a credit issued?
The minutes ought to be reflective of reducing that claim by $27.
Well, I don't want to shortchange the attorney's money on work that they did if it was concerning our city. It's just a clarification of why it's at Wes Bloomfield. So if they can tell us that they were, if it was really a typographical error or not, I'm willing to pay for it, but if it's not, then we should deduct the $27. So if it's your recommendation, we wait another...
I will send an email to Mr. Roberts, and the amount can end up being reduced by $27. And then they can correct that and just tell us whether or not it was. I would assume that it's a typographical error. And then just pay $27 in the next billing, which will be submitted for the next council meeting.
Right, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question. Does that need to be reflected in the motion that the adjustments can be made? As our motion stands as this is, as it is?
Having served here for many years, I would recommend that, that's why I was recommending that, the minutes reflect the reduction of $27. Because that's what, I thought we were going to pay all but the 27 until we got clarification of it.
And it was noted, 18-423, from, you see here, it says it's subject to clarification.
I didn't make the motion, so whoever made the motion...
But the maker of the motion, by far, Councilwoman Abdallah.
I'd like to amend the motion with the change of the $27 fee to the attorney's as submitted.
And I second that.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearings and comment on agenda items only. This is for items that are on today's agenda. The time limit is two minutes. I ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening. Zohair Abdulha. I have two items, 9A and 9B, on the agenda. And I'll be very quick. I have given everybody, including the mayor, copy of ordinance number H07-02, 111307, which states that any amount, anything over $5,000 has to be bid out. And you have here something for $16,100. I recommend that it is bid out because I believe there is saving in it for the city. A second one, the bathroom, which I call it the Taj Mahal of the city. I'm not against paying the money, but I would like to know, and I did pass to you memorandum for removal of architectural burial, which is clear does not allow the payment of $250,000 for a bathroom. And one of the bids was $430,000. Let me hear from anybody who is little conscious that 700 square feet, six stalls, somebody will bid $430,000 to build them. It cost the city $250. I believe we could have saved $150,000, but I'm not surprised. The same person let the ice arena go down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comment on agenda items tonight? Okay, let's move on. Next, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constand.
I move fund transfers and current claims, number 1 through 39, be approved as out, subject to discussion, as outlined in six, item number six.
Second the motion.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, seconded it. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I have one on 612, something, and it's being charged water fund. And on the second page, the second one down, review of email regarding campaign finance act compliance. What would that have to do with anything regarding water fund, $27?
I don't know why this is on the bill. I did not catch that. And we do not use Mr. McCully for any kind of, he strictly is dealing with water and sewer issues.
Yeah, I've always known that.
I have no...
That one stuck out like a sore thumb to me as I was going through the packet. And that's another charge that needs to be removed.
I'd reduce it by $27.
We can reduce this fund...
We'll ask him what this is.
Of the $2,983.97, reduce it by $27.
We're going to have Mr. McCully here within the next month because we want to give the council an update on the Ecorse Creek project. We have to make a decision. And also, an update on the basin that we've been trying to get, Wayne County, to allow us to take it over and get a maintenance contract with a company that'll save us a quarter of a million dollars and maybe more.
And then my next one is 614. It's the printing of the newsletter, and it's coming from the general fund, but it was requested by Cable Department. And what funds are we using? I did speak with the comptroller today, and she told me what this account was, but I'm concerned because of all the money from Cable, which is funds that we get back from the cable companies, are intermixed with the peg fees. No one can tell me how they separate these monies if they're all into one account. So what monies are we using to pay for this at $7,916? You can't use peg fees for this item right here.
No, come out of the general fund. Which number was it again?
This is 614, but the account number is the Cable. And we don't have a restricted fund account for the peg fees. So they're all intermingled in together, and this is...
Are you here representing, Linda? The 809 accounts, what are those, what account grouping is that?
I'm not exactly sure. I think it is a Cable account. You did submit information to, I believe, Dana and Linda, right? They were working on it for you? She's actually the one we were...
Yeah, Linda told me this, the comptroller, comptroller Vance, did tell me that this account is the Cable account.
Right.
So if it's the Cable account and our peg fees are not separated from that Cable, the regular Cable fees that we receive, how are we separating what we pay out of peg and what we pay out of Cable? It just doesn't make sense. And we could be not in compliance with using money that we're not supposed to be using on a newsletter, even though the newsletter is great, and I like it, but I got to watch where the money's coming from.
Why, Chanty, why don't you, Linda, you and I talked, but let's move the newsletter expense to the general fund.
Okay.
And that should be in that general fund account that's got all the other items dealing with it. We'll take it out of Cable.
Yeah, and...
When I say take it out, we'll take it out of that newsletter movement.
The other thing is, I'm hoping that the administration decides to, for all of our restricted funds, be put in separate funds by themselves and put in a budget so we can see them at budget time, that we have this much money in a restricted fund. Because right now, we've got to go through every piece of document the city has to find money that's restricted. And I don't think that's a very good way to do it, not very transparent. I'd like to be seeing more transparency in our restricted funds.
Okay. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, oh wait, you were next. Councilman Abdallah?
I just wanted to point out something, and correct me if I'm wrong, but on that fee there, it is paid for by a lot of the advertising, you know what I'm saying? So it could be just an accounting number that more than pays for itself. I just remembered speaking with Robert Ankrap at one point, and I don't remember the dollar figure, but it pays for itself, and I think there's even very little money left, but it does pay for itself through the advertising that's done in there.
And that's fine, but when you get this, this is telling me it comes out of a certain bank account, okay? So I have to go with what...
No, I get what you're saying, and I agree with what you're saying. I'm just saying it gets reimbursed from the advertising.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I just wanted to add, and I actually concur with you, Councilman Muscat, that the restricted funds by law have to be separate. They can't be in general fund. They can't co-mingle. They're not supposed to.
Yeah.
This is clearly stated by Michigan compiled law. So with that, I just wanted to say that, and I agree, we need to move forward with this. We've been talking about the peg monies, we've been talking about Act 345 with the 115 trust fund, and now we have, Plant, Mary Ann, agree and concur with that, and here we are. Now it's January 2019, and it's been like six, five months, and it's time to, let's see it moving at this point. It should be one of our goals to get it done.
Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Bazey.
Okay, 65. This is attorney fees for, I see there's a lot of personnel issues, grievances, arbitrations. I guess I have a few questions, but what I'd like to find out is, I mean, after an arbitration regarding, you know, you have some here I don't want to mention, because I guess should be, yeah, for public. But how much is these arbitration? I mean, when do we know what that's going to be, what the cost will be for the city or for the residents? How much do we have to pay after the arbitration? I mean, when is this going to become public?
It's published on...
I think that's just a grievance. Most of them, I will not, in a public forum, comment on arbitrations or, I mean, the attorneys have told us, this is not the forum, you've been told many times, this is not the forum, talk about litigation or negotiations or arbitrations.
My concern, Mayor...
Want to have a closed session? We'd be more than happy to discuss that with you.
Okay.
But it is not appropriate when we have issues that, but most of these items have no monetary effect.
Okay, we've asked, I've asked for that for the last few months, so I'd like to have a closed session to discuss all the grievances we've been paying for.
To the chair, we'd be more than happy to...
Okay. Yes.
Second item.
I agree.
69, I haven't seen these, it says that there's some addresses involved in here. It says paid to the city of Dearborn, $3,800. I'd like to find, the second one, sewer disposal for $25,930. So what is, and plus, we have a lot of addresses listed on here. So is the city of Dearborn charging these addresses? Let's, I'd like to find out the status on this.
Yeah, this has been brought up before, but Dearborn Heights is the ones that send the billing, but these people use the city of Dearborns, get their water. So we need to reimburse the city of Dearborn for these. It would be too expensive to start moving, there's no meters that would be affected. So these are Dearborn Heights residents, right on the boundary, because as you can see, it's Andover and I think Dartmouth. And, but we provide all the services, but the water actually comes through Dearborn's system, not ours.
So the residents will be reimbursing the city of Dearborn Heights, then after the city of Dearborn Heights pays that amount?
Well, we bill them based upon the meter reads. So we don't wait, there's not a time delay. When our meter readers go around to read their meters, the residents get charged, the rates that all of us are billed, and then, but we have to reimburse the city of Dearborn for the water. And the disposal charges, as all communities do, is based upon the amount of water usage at your home. That's why there's two charges.
Okay.
I have a question. Just out of curiosity, what's the difference between water rates in Dearborn, Dearborn Heights per cubic foot, or whatever, however they manage it? Much, is it a lot more than Dearborn Heights, less than Dearborn Heights?
Well, it's difficult to do a comparison because one of the things is that some of these charges are actually on the tax bill. So what happened was, we have a different system generally in the city of Dearborn Heights than Dearborn has. So if you remember, Dearborn has been, they have a combined system. Detroit is combined, Dearborn is combined. So the sanitary and the storm water are all combined and go to the treatment plant. In Dearborn Heights, in most of the area west and north of the city of Detroit, we have separated systems. So we have a sanitary system and a storm system, and they're separate. So that allows for a difference of treatment. And if I'm saying something incorrect, Mr. Brooks, correct me. So what happened is, Dearborn went to the residents because they are, they were ordered to separate, either separate the system or do something to retain this. Because what happens is, the treatment plant, when it rains, especially in hard rains, would not be able to treat the flow. So what they were doing is, it gets a preliminary treatment, goes right into Detroit River. And the federal government, the DEQ, said, "You cannot do that," Detroit and Dearborn. Detroit got an exemption because they went through bankruptcy. Dearborn did not. So what Dearborn did is, they went to the taxpayers and said, "Look, we can get a millage," and I think it was like six or eight mils, it was a significant amount. And so when you go to start comparing, like, we have a couple millages that are related to sanitary, there's the Judge Fiken's assessment, but we don't have that kind of millage amount that the city of Dearborn has. So when you start looking at rents or rates, you have to compare that also, and it becomes much more difficult to compare apples to apples because of the fact that some of it is based upon a tax rate millage in both of the communities. But Dearborn has a very large one. Now, my understanding, because they asked us if we wanted, because we have those separation systems in, along, basically from Cherry Hill to Dartmouth in the strip area, for lack of a better term, but that's how people describe it. So Dearborn asked us, and asked Inkster, if we wanted to take our flow into the system and the big retention item they have over by Outer Drive and Michigan Avenue. We chose not to do that. Now, what happened is, Dearborn, I think, had to put five or six of these. Some of them didn't work. In fact, Southfield Road, the whole freeway almost disappeared one day, south of Michigan Avenue, because they found it to ground, and they were putting in this big case on to hold the stuff, and it shifted. And so they haven't been able to use that. So Dearborn, I'm not sure if they've solved how they're going to deal with it. What we've done is, we traditionally, and we will talk about this in the next month, but we have to take care of those combined sewer overflows in the strip area. We also have a couple in the northeast portion of the city. But most of our Dearborn Heights is separated, so we don't have, and so it becomes very difficult to compare all these things, I guess. I'm probably...
All right, thank you. All right, we're still on, Councilman Bazey.
Okay, one more item. 620 says installment purchase fee, but there's nothing in here. It says purchasing what?
Is it the fire trucks?
Yeah, this is, this is the legal services to allow, that the treasurer utilizes them for purposes of being able to purchase the trucks, the fire trucks.
Yeah, I didn't say anything on here, so I'll go on here. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilman, Wenzel, did you have any?
I'm just curious about the cost of the water.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bids. This is the Park and Recreation Department Deputy Director, Kim Constand. Her request for bids for two True Reach in refrigerators, one for the Eaton Senior Center and one for the Berwin Senior Center.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move city council concur with Deputy Director Kim Constand and approve the, authorize the comptroller to advertise for bids for the two True Reach in refrigerators, per the attached specifications as outlined in 7A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdallah. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under consideration of bids, we have Park and Recreation Deputy Director Constand request for bids for two True Commercial Cardio 650 treadmills.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that we concur with Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, Kim Constand, for the review and action bid specifications for the purchase of two True Commercial Cardio 650 treadmills for the Richard A. Young Center. The funds for the treadmills are in capital outlay, 692-981, in the 2018 budget as outlined in item 7B.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I just had a question for the deputy director. I'm a treadmill nut, so I'm just curious, why this particular one? Is this, is this something that matches the other ones that we have in this space?
They're very familiar with this part of the community, you know, state of the speaker, and it's kind of what they've requested, that type again. It's easier not to make a change because they just do it.
I got you.
But it is a normal...
Good. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Constand.
Bazey.
So I noticed here, there's warranty on the treadmills. Are we, because I know we use them constantly, are we buying additional warranty on it?
If they have it available, usually they just have a set warranty and that's it. But being a commercial one, which is what we're definitely working for, they actually last longer and hold up these ones that we had that had lasted a long time.
They have bigger motors, too.
Yeah, if we bought a home one, it wouldn't...
No. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have reports from city officials. We have the Community and Economic Development Director, Hashem, the CDBG-FY 2016 Parkland Park ADA restroom facility final payment request number eight.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
What?
Councilman Constand.
I move we concur with our CDBG Director, Jihad Hashem, and approve the payment of the final payment request number eight from Sedrani Associates in the amount of $25,664 for the fiscal year 2016 Parkland Park ADA facility project as outlined in 9A.
Can I hear a second?
I will second the motion. Madam Chair.
Okay. Second by Hicks Clayton. Is there any further discussion?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman...
This says the final payment. It's $25,664. But I go through all the paperwork here, and it says something about we owe $32,022.65. Is this the last of this money that needs to be paid for this bathroom?
So what kind of work was done?
Councilwoman, the CDBG is only the funding source for this project, we're not the project managers. This amount of money is the money left in our department to be dispersed only. So that's our final money. The balance that you're referring to will come out from the Parks and Recreation, and that's been budgeted for, as far as I'm concerned. I will defer to the Parks and Rocks.
But the total amount of the bathroom is not going to exceed what we, I believe, was 231, 358, 25?
Correct. Yeah, we're only dispersing the money that we have agreed to disperse from the beginning ourselves. The rest will have to come from the Parks and Rocks, and I really have, I will not speak for that.
And all that was done before you came aboard, correct?
I inherited the project.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a question for Director Hashem. You know, when this started, and it seems like it's been a long time, by the way, but with that, you know, I was on the, I served on the Commission for Disability Concerns in our city, and right now, it's an inactive commission as no one has been reappointed. But with that being said, we have this obligation now that we're already into this, right? And I guess I'm really disappointed because it's, one, it's taken so long, two, in the past, I've addressed the lack of pavement that's appropriate for people that are wheelchair-bound, to the facility itself, to the bathroom. to the facility itself, to the bathroom itself, the fact it's taken so long. And I'm actually really curious, and what I'd like to request, I'd like to see, I know you have this summary on the back here. This is a $231,000 project with just this page. What I really want to see is how we, what we started with through the bid process and get to where we are, because I will tell you, I'm concerned with this. The way we got there, and I'm just as much responsible because we vote on this and we approve it. We're all responsible for approving this, if you voted on it. If not, then that's fine. But I want to sit down with you, and I'm sure the other councilmembers would like to see this information as well.
Councilwoman, again, I hate to, I apologize, first of all, for not being very clear. We are only the funding source. We had nothing to do from the project from A to Z. CDBG did the pledge to put in certain amount of money, I think it was $220,000, and that was vetted out, and that was based on the Parks and Recreation bidding that they went through, and that's what we're doing.
Madam Chair, if I may, and I will follow up with that. I'm not interested in debating this right now. What I'm interested in is sitting down and looking over it. I know how it's funded. I'm very familiar with community development block grants. We've already established that. So, that's kind of just treading in water that we don't need to do now. We need to move forward, and we need to really take a look at how we got there and how do we not do this again? Because in my mind, this project, to cost this and take this long, and we don't need to debate all the, that's why I want to sit down. We don't have time to talk about what we do, but I don't, you know, let's sit down and work through this, please.
Absolutely, Councilwoman.
Let's move on here. Let's move on.
May I say something, please?
Sure.
Again, I am the wrong person to sit down with. These documents that you're looking at are coming to me from a different department. That's all I'm trying to say.
I understand.
If you want to sit down with me, by all means, you are more than welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Coniston.
Go ahead.
Councilwoman, may I interject for a minute?
Is this your department, too, then?
No, but former Director Gribel, he had sidewalks poured from the parking lot to the bathrooms and to the pavilion.
Yes.
So, it does have, you can get, will the chairs through, it is handicap accessible. Those are done.
I appreciate that, because that was something that I had addressed, I don't know when, several years ago.
Yeah, I didn't know you didn't realize that. I've visited there recently, and they do have it.
Very good. And I appreciate that, because it's really important part of accessibility to our park system for those who have disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bazey?
Okay, so, I have not seen the original quote for the original restroom. And again, you know, we've had this discussion about the same bathroom with a lot of issues, and the previous director was up over there speaking for at least 10 to 15 minutes about this thing here, and about, it was almost done, we're finished, and now we have this here. So, I'm voting no for this, and that's the reason why. So, I just want to say that because...
Through the chair...
Councilwoman Coniston.
I just want to point out that in the contractor's application for payment, AIA document, how you read this is, they were, this was not a quote, this was bid out. And the original bid was two, that was accepted by the council, was $220,979.50. So, there's $10,378.75 of change orders, but the original contract was for $220.
Okay.
And it was awarded, the contract date was May 31, 2017.
Counselman Coniston.
Yeah, and part of the expense, because it's HUD money, is the requirements for the Davis Bacon Act and union workers and so forth. So, that's why anything that receives HUD money, that will often make a job, I don't know if anyone can quote, you know, like, 20% or 30% more expensive sometimes.
Were you bashing the unions here? Was it? Were you racist people? I take exception to that.
All right, all right. At this point, is there any further discussion?
You have to comply with prevailing wage and everything.
Councilwoman Bazey?
Okay.
Okay, at this point, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Next item under reports from city officials is Community and Economic Development Director, Hashem, personal, I'm sorry, proposal for professional services analysis of impediments to fair housing choice.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Director Joe Hashem for the Community and Economic Development Department and the Community Development Block Grant, requirements procuring Wade Trim as a consultant for CDBG as needed services. And they prepared the scope of the work and the total lump sum fee to Assistant Developing required analysis of impediments to fair housing choice report. And thereby, they're requesting approval for Wade Trim to prepare the analysis for, of impediments to fair housing choice for the total sum fee of $16,100 is outlined in item 9B.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Actually, Madam Chair, I have to defer to the maker of the motion. They have first rights on discussion.
Oh, all right. It's okay.
Councilwoman Abdullah, go ahead.
All right, just trying to follow the rules.
Trying to be a gentleman.
Thank you, you are indeed. So, with item 9B and looking, I guess my question, Director Hashem, is we're awarding this, or you're asking for approval for Wade Trim? And under HUD guidelines, this has to be bid out, and also under what we have in our city, Section 2803, as Mr. Abdallah had mentioned earlier, and we have a copy of, anything over $5,000...
Yeah, point of order, you're wrong on that.
Okay.
I'll let Mr. Meach talk about it, but you're wrong in city policy.
Okay, wait, we need to ask to be recognized before we speak. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton has this...
My question is, if I can finish my question, is tell us about the bid process, please.
Wade Trim is a procured company that we do once every five years. They have been procured, they have been, the process was out for bids probably back in 2015, I want to say, or 2013. Anyway, they're not due for procurement again until 2020. At that time, we will go ahead and procure another company, and that would, then at that point, we'll find out who we want to use for our consultants. So, they are procured already.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you answering the question.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hey, Councilwoman Abdullah?
Madam Chair, this question's for Wade Trim. Just want to check, does this also include rentals, apartments, et cetera, et cetera, in terms of possible potential discrimination?
I thought I included the proposal that included all of those properties as well, yes.
Okay.
It's something that required by the federal government that we do in our department. And we have to do it every five years.
Okay, and then just question, will they be working with, like, the different Board of Realtors here on stuff like this to get, you know, a lot of their, not only their analysis, but obviously, work on implementing, you know, directions to take it in a positive direction?
The contract that I have that I included, I believe, in the packet that you have, states how the process works and what they would do and how they would gather the data. I personally will not be involved in this.
Okay.
That's why I'm bidding this out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bazey.
Yeah, I guess I also like to see bids. I understand it was bided a few years ago, way before my time. I still like to see a bid, or at least what they came up with, because they can put any amount here. So, again, I'm voting no for this, and that's the reason, because I need to see bids.
Councilwoman Muscat.
You know, this was just brought up here, Section 2-803 Public Works. This is something I didn't know about, and I don't know if I'm supposed to know it as a councilperson. So, the city may contract for the performance of any public work or may perform the same itself through its departments, officers, and employees. However, the city shall not itself make any new public improvements exceeding an estimate of $5,000 until it has used competitive bidding therefore. The city shall have the right to reject any or all such bids or proposals. Now, I know she just brought this up, so what does all this mean in conjunction with this, where we're paying $16,100 without going out for bid? How does the two relate? And I think that's a question for the, our attorney. So, how do we, as a council, therefore, separate the two?
Council Chair, if I may. Okay. Basically, a bidding process is required when you do improvements, which really means actually constructing improvements and when you are basically making a physical change. This is long ago was interpreted, there's an old city attorney opinion that essentially says it does not have to do with services, like this type of contract, a contract for, say, architecture services would potentially not necessarily be involved unless you were doing it as a full project where you're making a public improvement. So, essentially, what Wade Trim would be doing here does not fall within these requirements. Now, you can require an RFP process or a bid process where it's not required, but it's not required by this section that has ended up being alluded to. And as Mr. Hashem has ended up pointing out, they've already gone through the appropriate vetting process and prequalification. Mr. Hashem, would that be a fair statement?
Yes, that was done about four and a half years ago.
Yes, so they've met that requirement.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion?
If I might point out, because a lot of you are new, there was some early opinions written, because when the charter, this is a, when the first council came upon contracts, they asked them, the Gary Meiki in that day, and I'm not sure who that was, to render an opinion on, and he came back and said, "There's services, and there's, like, equipment, new improvements, and the two are different." And if you read that opinion, you'll get a clear understanding. This is bid out every five years, though, as Mr. Hashem said. So, it has already been bid out, and Wade Trim was a little bitter.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I'll add one thing real quick, because I know we're ready to move on.
But, you know, one thing I would say is really important is that, as a city, we have
a charter review commission or something, a committee, because I don't, I couldn't tell you the last, I've been on councils, this is my eighth year. I have not seen that. And I think it's really important to get it done, because that is a best practice in municipal government. So, I think that would be prudent of us to do so moving forward.
I plan on that in this next year.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Councilwoman Muscat, Bazey, and Melonowski, a no. Next item on the agenda is Park and Recreation Deputy Director Coniston, the smart contract.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the City Council concur with Parks and Recreation Deputy Director Kim Coniston and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the copies that are attached for the municipal and community credit contract for fiscal year 2019. It should be noted, and I want to thank Deputy Director Coniston, that this is a, the council did vote on this in October, and it was incorrect. The incorrect figures were included from, the community credit figure was wrong. That's an increase, it's an increase of 7.5, it's from 7.5 to 15%. So, again, thank you for catching that and addressing it, because that means more, you know, transportation monies in our community for our senior programs. So, as moved and outlined.
Okay, second by Councilwoman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next on the agenda is Police Chief Volta Torney, 20 VoIP licenses for Mitel phones, request to purchase and pay.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Coniston.
Councilwoman Muscat. I move that we concur with our Police Chief, Dan Volta Torney, and approve the 20 voice-over internet licenses for the Mitel phones in the amount of $6,100. The reason for this purchase is our current phone system doesn't support the recording of these lines, and when police calls come to the police station, they have to be recorded as outlined in 9D.
Councilwoman...
Second.
Councilwoman Abdullah, second it. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, under, the next on agenda is Police Chief Volta Torney, 20, I'm sorry, Jensen IT WatchGuard Basic Security Suite subscription for one year, request to purchase and pay.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Police Chief Daniel Volta Torney, requesting the council approval for the purchase and payment of the following, Jensen IT WatchGuard Basic Security Suite subscription for one year, and the amount, the amount total cost is $1,654.99 as outlined in item 9E.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have on the agenda Police Chief Volta Torney, this is One Smart Travel Traffic Counter and Trailer, and it's a request for disposal.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat.
I move council concur with Police Chief Dan Volta Torney in the disposal of the One Smart Travel Traffic Counter and Trailer as outlined in 9F.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Abdullah, I'm sorry, second by Councilwoman Bazey. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next on the agenda is new business. We have a business license renewal for Boneyard located at 7010 North Telegraph.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Coniston.
I move we approve the business license renewal for the Boneyard on Telegraph Road as outlined in 13A.
Madam Chair, support the motion, but I was hoping we could take both the Boneyard and Walker's Speakeasy together.
Yeah, Walker's Speakeasy is also part of it.
Together as one motion to approve both of the renewals, please.
That was revised.
Yes, that was, because I was looking for that.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we will do that and Walker's Speakeasy.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Abdullah. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have members of the public. This is for comments from city councilmembers at the table.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
All right, Madam Chair, I just have two things this evening. I'll be very quick. The first one is I attended a professional development program this morning, and with the new year, we always set goals for ourselves, right? And say, what are we going to do, what are we going to accomplish? I think this is true for the city as well. I think there's needs to be, we can, I would love to see us sit down with the residents and have a visioning session. We can cover, like, the Van Born Court or Development, you know, moving forward as it is moving forward, maybe even using the toolkit that I presented, you know, from, there was a regional and actually national award-winning program. And then, you know, Warren Valley Golf Course, for example. How do we move forward and do what's, you know, good for the community and for our residents? So, that's the first thing. The second thing I have is, I was contacted by a resident, and I will tell you, I have sent emails, I've called multiple times. And this is for DPW, and I know Mr. Blackburn would probably be the one to speak on this tonight. I really don't need an answer, though, but I'm going to tell you real quick, the synopsis. This resident has a 30-year-old tree on his personal property in his backyard that, it sounds like the tree is diseased, it's 30 years old, bark falls off of it, limbs fall off it. I know limbs fall all the time. But in the fall and then throughout the year, the leaves have black dots on it, which would be considered possibly blighted and diseased tree, which we do have ordinance for that. But I never received a call back or anything from anybody, and I called a couple times yesterday and even today, and I had nothing. And I did not want to bring it up to the table, because I thought we could work behind the scenes and address it for the resident. But that did not happen, so I do say, here I am. But with that, the resident did get a call from somebody from the city who said, "Well, there's a bill, a law on the books in the state of Michigan that would prohibit us from granting your permit on your private property and your private tree." And I checked on that, and I wasn't sure, but when I heard that, I thought, you know, I wonder if they're talking about that bill, which was Senate Bill 1108, which actually failed and died in lame duck. So, therefore, that's not on the books. And then, when I went further, I said, "I want to do a search," and I was working with somebody from the state of Michigan on this, and they said, "We don't see anything unless the city of Dearborn Heights has something else." But still, it's on private property and, you know, state trumps city and all that, you know? And that's where I am with this today, because this gentleman, he's getting ready to move because he's not getting cooperation on this tree. He's had problems for a while, including in front of his house, a tree that has lifted his sidewalk. He's prepared to replace the sidewalk at his expense. his sidewalk, he's prepared to replace the sidewalk at his expense, but he's not going to do it until the root system is addressed, because it just keeps lifting the sidewalk. So this has been ongoing for this individual for a while now, and I would just like to see it. And again, Mr. Blackburn, I appreciate what you're doing, but I don't even need an answer. What I want to know is if it can be handled, please.
Well, I'm. Wait a minute, through the chair, is this a house on Catherine?
Yes.
I talked to the gentleman yesterday.
I know.
And there is, I think, more to this than meets the eye, but there is an ordinance that was passed by this body that restricts just people moving and taking out healthy trees. It was inspected, although the gentleman says it was not, I'm having it re-inspected for him. It is being followed up on, we don't need 20 people, I did not know that you were involved with it, but he contacted my office, and I called him back yesterday, and as soon as I get a final report, I will be in contact with you.
May I follow up?
Thank you. Do you know, and I appreciate that, by the way, thank you, do you know, because I would imagine you probably want to wait till spring, at least when the tree starts to get its leaves back, to do a full assessment? I don't know, because if the tree leaves have the, and I'm not a tree person, expert, I like trees, but, but if it has like these black dots all over the leaves, that's an indicator that there could be a problem with the tree. So would you wait until then, or would you do it sooner?
Not necessarily. We have access to, is it called an arbiologist?
It's an.
Arborist?
Arborist. I'm sorry, mispronounced it. So we do have access, if we're in doubt. The gentleman did not tell me that it was diseased, he indicated that he's not happy the fact that branches are dropping from it. I have four or five trees on my property, and branches drop from trees.
I have a question, may I ask one more question? And I'm sorry to, because I want to get, since we're talking about it. My, my concern was because this man has already said he wants to take this tree down, it's dropping branches, what if it does property damage, like to his roof or something? And what happens then for the liability factor? Because we denied the permit. What, I'm just, I'm just, I'm asking the attorney, please.
No, we shouldn't have any liability under those circumstances. We can set the standards, you have, for example, Mr. Pekian has come in here and would actually want us to do an ordinance that would be much more restrictive than what we have. And I haven't been contacted with respect to this particular matter, but I know that Mr. Zimmer normally follows up on these things and tries to abide by our ordinances.
Okay, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Is this the, Madam Chair, is this the optometrist, the regulated optometrist?
I don't know, because I don't get into all those details. I just want to know what the laws and what we're doing.
Okay, well, at this point, let's just move on.
Council Chair.
Any other, okay, is this comments from council members?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Muscat.
We spoke earlier today about, you know, restricted funds and, and that of that nature, and I'm, and I'm hoping that, that this year's budget meeting, that all of these restricted funds are put in their own separate account, line items by line item, so we can go through them, and we know exactly what monies we have available and what they're available for. I don't want to go around and check in Plant Moran's booklet after they get done and hunting and pecking to see anything. These things should be out there for everyone to see when it goes online, when the budget is, is put online. I'd like to see that from the administration, and I'm hoping we get it. The other thing is, is it's January, golf season's right around the block, and we have yet, we've only had one person come in to give us anything on how we can improve the golf course. We ask for other people to come in, even though I was happy with what I had with, with this person, but we did as a body ask for more people to come in. We need to have these people come in now, we need to move on it now, not tomorrow, like in the next five minutes, we need to do something. Golf season's right around the corner. So please, whatever we need to do, let's get, let's get it on the.
Let's move on forwards, one way or another. Councilman Wensel?
To piggyback on Councilman Muscat, the line item breakdown, I think we should have a study session, because we, we've had things about the water department, water budget, and we can just say, this is what we want, we should have a study session, because this is exactly what we want and how we want it done, because it, just asking for it's not going to get it done unless we ask specifically for what we want. So I think we should look into that in the future. And also, I was looking over the ordinance 2-803, and how it pertains to Item 9B, and doing some thinking here, I'm going to change my vote to, to no on that, on that 9B.
Okay, so that would make it fail, then. 9B would have four no votes, that would be Muscat, Bazey, Melonowski, and Wensel. Okay, Councilman Abdullah?
To piggyback on that golf, because that's the question I had, the mayor, is there anything set up as far as, you know, in the future, as far as who we're going to be meeting with, as far as second or third or maybe even fourth possible options?
At this point, we don't have a recreation director, that's who I would normally assign to put together a proposal. And right now, we're being overwhelmed, there are a lot of year-end reports that we're obligated to do, and with the lack of a full complement of department heads, we are rallying to get those, because they have a lot of effects on residents. For instance, there's one report that we need to file year-end for highway, for water rates, and a report for the insurance agency, because it allows our residents a 15 percent discount on the flood insurance. So those are all items that we're scrambling to get completed and done for January.
And I think those are important, I can tell you right now, for sure, the flood insurance one, that definitely affects the values, especially in the South Heights. So that's good that we're going in that direction, because they've gone, the prices on those have gone crazy, but we really need to get on this golf course thing, even if you had to assign it to somebody outside of, you know, the recreation department, I don't know if that's allowed or not, but personally, I believe to open up this, this business, or for us to take it over, it's got to open up with a bang. And I'm talking about this coming spring. If we start slow, we start weak, you know, in general, business will tend to continue like that, especially because people are, have all their eyes on us to see, all right, what are we going to be able to do any differently than the, than the county? And I believe we can, if we have somebody that's going to be able to give us the right advice and take us in the right direction. If we wait too long, it's going to be too late, and then we're going to start, you know.
I totally agree, and that's why I brought him back in the end of, or early December, Thanksgiving, to come in, because I, we lost a month and a half. And by the time we advertise and get proposals in, I think we're talking March.
Okay, well, I just like personally, see it as fast as possible. I had two more quick items. I opened up the press and guide, so I just wanted to recognize these two people, there's two articles about our Dearborn Heights community, and I was very, very proud of them. The first one is for the Deputy Director Kim Constant, she was named a 2018 Outstanding Good Fellow of the Year, so I want to congratulate her for that. Good job. I love seeing our, our city, you know, in the press and guide. And then the second one, who I know does a wonderful job in our fire department, and I know the chief always talks about the grants and the amount of money that she brings in, and I'm so glad that she was picked the 2018 Firefighter of the Year. I want to be there, I was asking, why weren't we there? But I guess this is a private party they do. So these guys are little party animals, they do private stuff, but anyways.
We're not part of it.
I wanted to personally congratulate Lisa Martin for being named the 2018 Firefighter of the Year, and, I mean, look at this, first thing on the page, so, want to congratulate her, good job.
May I tell Councilman Abdullah, I agree with you. In fact, I contacted somebody from the fire department, I said, where was our invitation? Because the council wants to be supportive, and they, hopefully they'll hook us up next year, okay?
Okay, any other comments?
Good job, though, really.
Councilman Constant?
And I'd like to, speaking of the fire department, thank Chief Dave Brogan and our Executive Director of our Goodfellows, Jarrett Williams, and our longtime treasurer, John Zadikian, and everyone who helped out with the Goodfellows this year. We gave out an aid, a raise, just under 30,000, and gave out aid to people who are the residents of Dearborn Heights. I join with everyone else in mourning the death of the Abass family, as they were coming back from Florida on their vacation. The problems drunk drivers call, causes tragic, I'm glad when I was in the legislature, I pushed through and passed the high BAC legislation, sometimes incorrectly called the super drunk driving legislation, that calls for stiffer penalties for those who drive with a blood alcohol level of .17 or above, and also allows for immediate impoundment of a person's vehicle.
Yeah, just like to add just one thing, of course, my condolences to the Abass family, I, I personally knew Sam, the father, personally through working with our company at Century 21, and ironically, we spent four days with them at the last convention we had in Miami, about a month, maybe a month, month and a half ago, and we spent tons of time just sitting around talking, and, man, one of the nicest people you could have ever met. I, I, I'm still dumbfounded that this happened, especially a family of five. So my, my sincerest condolences, and hopefully have power to get through this very difficult situation. It was so sad today, being at the cemetery and watching five bodies, oh my God.
Just the tragedy of that is that they stayed one day late for their vacation, to also attend another funeral.
Yeah.
And had that not happened, they would, would be here, and we wouldn't be talking about it.
Yeah.
Nice people. Tragedy in itself.
Okay, any other comments from the table?
Madam Chair.
Mayor?
Two announcements, one is with the change in the legislation on fireworks, I've directed our Corporation Council to adjust our ordinances to restrict it to the 12th date, so that is in process. The other thing is, we got word today from DTE regarding some construction that they're going to be doing in the city on gas meters in February. The area affected will be North and South Streets, between Colgate and Dartmouth, from West Point to Williams, 18 streets. This work will only affect homes where the gas meters are still inside, but construction equipment may make travel inconvenient at times. So we're letting everybody know. We really don't have control over this, but out of courtesy, they told us, so you'll, you may, if you're one of the affected homes, but you're also going to see construction crews in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask for announcements.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor, I just want to talk about a couple of quick items at the library. First off, Thursday, January 17th, at 7:00 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, we will be having a program on addictive behaviors. Join Terrence Schulman as he discusses how to distinguish between normal and addictive behaviors in the areas of gambling, shopping, eating, and more. Next, Tuesday, January 22nd, at 7:00 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, we will have a program on Mongolia. Come on out, as Dr. Orin Gelderloos takes you on a journey where fewer tourists, tourists go, and guides you to the ins and outs of this exotic land. And finally, Library Feud is on at JFK Library. Wednesdays from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, starting January 23rd through the month of March, I believe, come on out for a boisterous game of fun that the whole family can play. Teams will be randomly selected to compete, register by calling 313-791-6050. That's all for now, thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Oh, thank you.
Hello, Nancy Breyer, Colgate Street, and again, it's a new year, and we have a new and exciting group forming in South Dearborn Heights, it will be called the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association. Our first meeting, we're replacing what was, and we're going to make it better. Our first meeting will be Friday, the 18th, at the Richard Young Center, at 6:30 to 8:30. I hope to see you all there, and you can get in touch with me if you have any questions. We will be promoting anything that has to do with our city, both sides, north and south, okay? So please give me a call or show up, we'd love to have you.
How about your phone number?
Okay, 313-770, what is it, 1707? Oh, wait a minute, I gave you part of my son's. Let's go back with 313.
Hold that number.
3331707.
Say that again, 333?
3331707.
And you said Friday, the 18th at?
Friday, the 18th, 6:30 at the Richard Young. So we'll be inviting a few of you to speak in the future. I have the Police Chief on alert, for him to come and introduce himself and his new recruits, so that we'll know who they are, and if we see them, we'll be nice to them, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Diane Weber, County Commissioner, Happy New Year to all of you first, that's the good news. And I'm sorry, getting here so late, but I've been literally working around the clock. I'm running on about three hours sleep right now. I don't know if you've read, there weren't, that the Evans Administration has put more county park land up for sale in Heinz Park. And so, they're looking to sell off the Newburgh Mill, right, the lakefront property there at Newburgh, where the sheriff's horses' quarters are, and where the mill is, and then, it's about three acres of Heinz Park there. And then they're also looking to sell off Phoenix Mill, which is across from Phoenix Lake, and it's about 13 acres, they're trying to build high-end residential development in the park again, like they were trying to do in Warren Valley. So I'm absolutely, you know, I put it out there on Facebook, I've talked to a few people to see how the people feel about it, because I'm all about representation. And, you know, we paid $247 million in park millage money over the last 28 years to maintain these parks. And they're investing $15 million to keep Chandler Park in Detroit open, they're spending tens of millions in, in Elizabeth Park, Down River, and they just keep chopping up Heinz Park and selling it off, and I'm livid. So Friends of the Rouge, and the Nature Valley, or the Holiday Nature Preserve folks, and the Save Heinz Park folks, that actually, some of which, Save Heinz Park actually was born out of the Warren Valley Golf Course attempt to sale. So if you remember the Dog and Pony Show, that they came and did in front of you all, and before you got all the information that you needed, and tried to sell you down the road of supporting it, before you heard from the people and all that, they tried to do the exact same thing. They didn't do the whole presentation, the presentation's going to be on the 23rd of January, in the city of Livonia. But they, they did go there to ask that their Committee of the Whole put it on the agenda for that. And I want to thank Mayor Pleco, because I called the mayor and asked him, would you forewarn their mayor and council to at least hear from their people before they write letters of support? And I shared with them what happened here, you know? And same thing, they brought none of it to the county commission. They have not presented this to the county commission at all, we had to hear it third party from the outside in. The only people that were brought on board at all were, you know, a couple of folks that, that were both on that same side of the aisle, and I don't know if that's why they thought they would support it, but the person that represents Northville and the person, and part of Livonia, it's, it's technically in their district, but Heinz Park spans six county commission districts, touches about nine communities, a big chunk of it here in Dearborn Heights. So thanks to you, we don't have a development in Warren Valley, but I just wanted to make you aware of it, because Dearborn Heights residents use Heinz Park, and they love Heinz Park. And they've been paying for Heinz Park for 28 years. So I just wanted to let your residents know that the Save Heinz Park folks are going to be doing a, a rally tomorrow night, a town hall meeting, they're hosting it at the Civic Center Library at 32777 Five Mile Road in Livonia, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And, you know, we appreciate the support from the community, having been there. And I got to tell you, you saved the Livonia Council, you saved the, you saved the Livonia Mayor and Council.
I got comments from most of them.
Did you?
It was so nice to hear from my good friend Laura Toye, the council chair in Livonia. But they thanked me for, and thank you for alerting me, so I would say, well, I'm sure that I'm not winning points with the county executive, but I feel very strongly that Edward Heinz Park should not be sold off in pieces till it's gone.
Yeah, because once it's gone, it's gone. And, and the sales pitch they're given is that, well, they're going to have businesses in there that'll have legal agreements, that they'll have businesses that are complementary to the park. Well, if, if an art gallery can't pay to keep the lights on in a year, and they sell it, they have no, they have no control. So I could have a Kentucky Fried Chicken and, and, you know, whatever, Rite Aid, in Heinz Park. And, you know, if. And, you know, if you look at the communities that surround Heinz Park, we have strip malls from, to here, all of the communities in Wayne. It's the little ribbon of green space that we have left and it's all we have. So if we don't protect it, we'll have none. And, you know, it just, it just makes me very aggravated that they continue to attack this park. So anyway, they heeded your warning and you know what their reply was, is I think this sounds like county commission business and you should take it up there. And then once you take it up there, we'll go from there, but we're going to stay in our own lane and we're going to manage the City of Livonia and let the county commission manage the county.
So it's good teaming up with you.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Boy, you really had my back and it really made a difference. So, and all the Friends of the Rouge and all the folks that, you know, appreciate that park, appreciate you. And I couldn't get to all of you, all right, I got to all of you, but I forwarded letters that you wrote in opposition, all of you that wrote one, and put it together in a packet with even residents that I got, you know, several residents from Livonia wrote about Warren Valley. And so I included all of them and the watershed folks and several other organizations and I gave them all a packet so that they can see, you know, how the people feel. But they really, I've already heard from WXYZ and several other media channels that they intend to show up at the library. So I think it would be really awesome if we could support them, like a lot of them supported us. And so I wanted to get here tonight to invite you to that at the library tomorrow night. And then the committee as a whole that this will be heard in front of will be on the 23rd of January. It's Wednesday, 23rd, at the Livonia City Council Chambers. Now, I don't know where, what the status is in Plymouth. Plymouth Township is where the Wilcox Mill is. And I don't know where that is yet because the council member that was representing that area was beaten the last election. And the new county commissioner that represents Plymouth Township, Plymouth City, and Canton doesn't know anything about it. She just, just, she just got sworn in this morning. So, so she's just learning, but I can tell you, she's already opposed to the notion. So anyway, we're going to, we're going to have, battle it, but, so here we go, you know, round two, ding ding, here we go, Save Heinz Park. So I just wanted to come out and let you guys know. Thank you.
One question, please. How is that, does that area flood a lot where those, I know the section where Heinz is in Dearborn Heights floods like crazy. Does that flood a lot down there too?
Yeah, the mills are built on high ground, but the surrounding areas, see, that's the really troubling part for.
How would they get there? How do they get to, I mean, how are they going to get home if the areas flood on Heinz?
Oh, the bridges even down between the two locations, you can't even get there.
I know. Right now, we, I was just on Heinz and it keeps cutting off.
Right, how are they going to build 150 homes on your flood plain? I don't know. It's silly. But that's what, they're claiming through engineering, they can raise the grade, whatever, the water goes somewhere else.
Back to us if they raise the grade.
Yeah, yeah, right? So, so I, and I'm okay with them repurposing those mills. If they want to, if they want to renovate and repurpose those mills and lease them out to someone that does something that's complementary to the park, I'm fine with that. Just don't sell the land. Because once you sell the land and sell the property, it's gone. You know, there's no getting it back. We lose control of it. You have no idea what's going to go in there, so, so that's the issue. But anyway, thanks for your time and I appreciate you all and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, is there any more public announcements?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, this is, all right, public comments?
I'm going to let the cat out of the bag.
Okay, please state your, okay, we're going to ask you, state your name, your address, and three minutes.
My name's Arthur Taylor, 4453 Culver, Dearborn Heights. I'm going to let the cat out of the bag because a lot of people don't know who I am. And I can't read and I can't write and I made it in this life, all right? I got a house in Dearborn Heights and I bought it 50 years ago. They keep raising the taxes on it and I ain't been able to get nobody to help me to stop getting the taxes raised. They just raised them this year $300 and I'm on a fixed income at $780 a month, all right? So if there's anybody that think they can do anything for me, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you all have a nice night. And 75 years old, I'm still getting around. Thank you.
God bless you. All right, any other public comments? Come up to the microphone. It's three minutes. State your name and address.
Zohair Abdalha, 354 Rosemary. This is a new year and the city has lots of financial obligation. And I believe it is your responsibility to budget every penny in the right place. So I ask you this year, please, every contract comes in front of you, read it carefully before you approve it. Anything you see in front of you, any account, it is your responsibility to make sure our money is spent properly, it's allocated properly, because we have lots of obligation and, you know, it's in the tens of millions. And it is very easy, you know, to slam taxes under Act 345 or water fund on the resident. The residents are tired. I am tired of paying money which I shouldn't pay. So please, look at every contract comes in front of you and see if you can change this charter. It's very old. You should have more say in negotiations. You should have more say in the future of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? State your name, address, and three minutes, please.
Hi, Trupkowski, Columbia Street, 8679. Couple of weeks ago, we were talking about the property at Mayburn and George. And I believe the mayor stated that there's no way that property could be rezoned because of a sewer pipe.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Speak in the microphone, speak in the microphone, please.
Questioning the property at Mayburn and George. You were talking about rezoning that property several weeks ago. And I thought the mayor had stated there was no way that property could be rezoned because of a pipe that the county owns going underneath the road and the property there?
The man who has the blue moon, I think it's called, on telegraph, wanted to, in back of that wall is a dedicated street. There's nothing there, but it's a dedicated street. And I indicated that that street, before anything could be sold on it, would have to be vacated. And the other problem is though, is that there's a water line and we actually, the week I think after I brought, that was brought up at the meeting, it actually burst. And so it's a very deep water line. And one of the reasons, it's a major water line. And the way it's, because it's so deep, because there's also Bill's Drain that you notice telegraph kind of dips and that drain goes all the way through the cemetery. So you have some major transverse pipes in there. And in fact, I talked to Mr. Brooks afterwards. Mr. Brooks said, before the city ever sells that property, you indicated that we would need to, using, if I, I'll use, well, go ahead. Yeah. So, but the property, not where the street is, but in back of it, used to be the old fire station. And the city sold that after getting bids, I don't know, 10 years ago about. And so consequently, that property is now in private hands.
Okay, so what's, what's being rezoned there? Is that the additional?
Well, there's a sign up. We'll let Jack address that because I don't want to mistake.
The property owner has come in front of the planning commission to build a multifamily unit there.
Another one?
An apartment building.
But he's got, whoever comes in here has got to be aware of the easement, of these big drains. So I don't know what's being proposed, but they cannot build on those drains.
Yeah, Wade Trim did their, all their planning consulting work and they're where, I mean, that's not their property where that vacated street is. Their property is west of that.
So if you're going to put another multiple unit family home there, is there actual space?
Yes.
That's a big enough space?
Yeah, it was reviewed by Wade Trim and.
And the parking issue and all that?
They can support it, yeah.
Okay.
Are they saying?
Go ahead.
So is it for sale? I mean, what's the status of the property? I mean, you mentioned they got a, is it going to be sold?
No, he's building on it.
So it's already sold and owned by somebody, they just want it rezoned?
They want it, yeah.
To build another building?
I thought the city owned that property though.
No, there's multiple pieces of property there. There's right on the other side of the wall is what we own. And then west of what we own is a whole nother piece of property that's privately owned.
We own it or the county owns it because of that sewer pipe?
No, we own.
Would have easement rights, not necessarily, but they have, as, like the city would have, any and all easement rights where our water lines are. So that's a little bit different.
Interceptor, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? Do I hear a motion to end our meeting?
Madam Chair, very quickly if I can, I just want to recognize our senior citizen weightlifting champion, John Iblor, who's the trainer at the Richard A. Young Center, who's here today. Both he and his daughter. How much did you lift, John? How much?
315.
Oh, my goodness.
Congratulations.
Wait, is that a bench or deadlift?
Deadlift.
Deadlift?
Wow.
Oh, really?
Wow.
The next one's coming up.
That's me and you, man. His daughter, who's out in Florida, was a champion female weightlifter.
Hey, Bob, also, John is the athletic advisor. What's your role there at the Richard A. Young Center?
I'm the physical trainer there.
Physical trainer, yeah.
Wow.
I've been there 23 years.
Great.
Good job.
You're inspiration.
Been there several times. He's a good guy to talk to if you have a question on, you might build up your biceps or something, you know?
Here to make sure we get our, pride mills going so we can remain competitive with the other fitness places.
I've got a long way to go before I get there. Yeah, do I hear a motion to end our meeting?
Second.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.